So we're going to reconvene in the public session of, I think it's the second board meeting of the calendar of the school year, so welcome back. The first thing, now the minutes actually, it's your comments.
To approve the revised board meeting schedule.
So everyone should have received a copy of the revised board meeting schedule. Changes I think were involved, one of them is today, I guess.
It just could be a change?
No, it wasn't the location change today. It was the October 11th.
The October day, we're not going to have that meeting.
Okay. So hopefully everyone's had a chance to review that. I need a motion to approve the revised schedule.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You? Do you want to prepare those?
I do, but you and me have to, according to the approval of the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay.
And then the minutes.
Perfect. So in your materials, you should have the Health and Safety Committee list. List. We do this every year.
Yes.
And so we just need a motion to approve the appointment of the Health and Safety Committee.
Second.
I just want to make a quick comment for you.
Sure.
One name that you'll see on there that you're not familiar with is Robert Lancia, who is from the Altaris Group. If you recall, we had a discussion about hiring the Director of Security or something security related. The Altaris Group, we are contracting through BOSI's. And Dan and I had the opportunity to interview Robert Lancia last week. We think he'll be a nice addition for us. He has, I forgot how many years' experience as a New York City police, it must've been about 25 years as a police lieutenant in Suffolk, New York. And had, most recently, he's retired from there. Most early work for security in his organization. And we met him, I think, at dinner nicely at our school. And we'd like to appoint him as part of the Health and Safety Committee. And he's going to be working on not only our security stuff, but also the report that we received back from Altaris with some recommendations throughout the year. So I just want to make sure you know what that name was.
Great. Thank you. So any further discussion about this list of mine? All in favor?
Aye.
And that lasts the minutes, right? So another lengthy set of minutes from the July meeting, modifying everything we did. Any comments or changes for Connie on this? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from July?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks. Just want to update the board on a number of things that we've been having going on the last week or so. It's been a busy place. We have our new teacher orientation this week. Last couple of days, we've had our curriculum leaders in, we've had our mentors and mentees in. Today, with all the things going on, I think there was lunch with about 90 people in our cafeteria. I think they were, have everyone back, not quite, but almost. So it's been a, it's been a busy place, getting a lot of things ready for the start of the year. Now, you can see the hallways are in, almost ready form, I hope. It always gets me a little nervous that week before school, saying how are we going to possibly get all this back together again? But somehow Mike and his crew will, I know they will, and has done a great job for us this summer. But I'd like to share with you some updates on the construction and the capital bond projects. And Dan, I'll ask you for assistance along the way as we go through it all. But of a few things, the library is in its final stages of being ready to welcome our students back. I expect that, or we're hoping to get them back, at least using the library again in about the second week in September.
Yeah. I think next week will be a transition week and maybe a little, little week after, too.
But it's coming together nicely. The carpet's all down, starting to put the shelving shelves back in. The ceiling looks gorgeous, the work that they've done there. If not, everything will be ready, you know, there are some temporary doors inside because they're in a long lead time on those things. Brad and his crew will have to get back, will get in next week to look at the polytechnology, make sure that's working properly. And as you recall, the HBAC work that has to get done as part of the bond project was a secondary use of funds there. And that will get done for a while yet.
Probably next summer.
Yeah, probably next summer when that all gets done. It won't start with AC yet, but the rest of it, we'll be ready to go, hoping about the second week or thereabouts to look back in. So that project's going along very, very nicely. You see the PA clocks we have up in the wall here, they're in every classroom, in the hallways. They have some minor touches left, Brad, correct?
Yes.
If you weren't even fully, but it does actually tell the right time in all our classrooms, and they're all the same. But it does have the ability, if you recall, to have a strobe light when we have a lockdown message. It also allows us to scroll messages across the screen there, and you have to communicate that. We did have a test, and this nice lady's voice comes over, the let us know what's going on. But I know Trish is excited to have elementary school announcements going on, just elementary schools in the morning, very excited about that. So we will find a lot of uses for the PA system, so I think that project is coming along almost, just, just about done. So that's good. And then, as you know, the field and track are open. It looks terrific, and our, our teams are using it well. Community has been using the track since it's been open. That's going along just really nice. Get a lot of nice compliments on the, on the track and the field. It looks beautiful, it really does. It's quite a, it's quite a facility. Then along the Meadow Avenue side, work has started on the new storm drain. They dug up the sidewalk and actually, they dug up sidewalk, took all the cement away, and now they just put it back down again so we can walk on and use that as egress once we need to. And then when the pipe gets delivered, they'll dig it back up and start laying the pipe down in sections. But that's going down Meadow Ave and across Bydase Field area and connect to our storm drain system out there, so.
And there's a staging plant in place so that we don't lose any egress during that whole period.
During the whole time, right?
Are we able to lose any parking on Meadow?
No.
Not while school?
We may lose that small lot outside of the auditorium for staging area when we begin construction of the condition.
Class, we get a lot of them.
Yeah, they had, they had the dumpsters there for the cement.
Okay. So that was dumb school starting. We had the same fear, like, oh my, we're not.
We're going to lose that side of that small, turn a lot permanently.
If we put a chiller there.
Yeah, we have to put chiller there, yeah.
That's four or five spots.
Uh.
Five spots.
How many Mars parks there? Marsup makes his own spot.
It's putting a person in the number.
And, and we're losing a few metered spots up towards Pond Field with the entrance to the staging area that's right outside the boiler room at Pond Field and Midland, but that's unconstitutional.
The town's losing the meters.
Exactly, yeah.
We had, we did have a meeting, just so you know, with the village to communicate the construction that's going on, so they know, kind of helping us out with traffic flow. Because at some point, as you know, we're going to lose the entrance to the high school. I don't know exactly when that'll come offline, but probably not until late October is my guess. But we met with the chief and the village manager, and they're actually, for the drop off in front of the school for Pond Field, on the school side, from seven to nine, two to four, they're not going to allow any parking during the whole stretch now. So it gives a wider area to.
And the high school is open by the electrifying?
They will, but we can, so we're going to start the year at the normal entrance, and then whenever, whenever we get notified that they're going to take it offline, then we'll switch it around to the auditorium side.
Will it all be said and done by the time of graduation?
Which said and done do you mean?
The front of the school.
Well, they're not doing anything to the front of the school until next summer.
Okay.
They're just taking, they're just not allowing parking there, just so a drop off can so it doesn't interfere with the crowd a lot too much.
And that fenced-in staging area by Midland and Pond Field, that'll still be there.
That'll still be there, the two fences, but not in the front of the school where graduation is.
Where are they not allowing parking?
Just the church from seven to nine, two to four, the front and on Pond Field, on the front part of the school side. You know there's parking there during the day. They don't allow people to park there.
I thought that was always not permitted.
On the tail end, from the front of the school to Meadow.
Down by the auditorium.
Yeah.
Okay.
They have it, and they're not allowing that. That's about 10 more spaces. So they tried to stretch out the drop off here a little bit further. So that work on the storm drain has started. We don't know exactly where they're going to have the actual entrance offline, but at some point they will, to start in the lobby in the guidance area. But we'll know that ahead of time, start diverting it that way. They've also started, they have cleared out the courtyard in the cafeteria, trees and the papers that had been there and cement that was there, that's all been taken out. They're going to start that work, and I think be driving a pile in soon to do a test on it. I think 45 piles need to be driven on in that area.
Forty-five?
Forty-five.
But it's not allowed pile driver.
It's not a driver, it's a drill.
Yeah, I'm sure it's very quiet.
But they will not be doing it when school's in session during the day, after three o'clock. If they're not done yet, they're going to do it after three o'clock. But that work has started as well.
So can you refresh my memory on what is happening with the kids and the use of the cafeteria? Is it all, are they, are they?
It's not going to be offline.
It's not going to be offline?
No, cafeteria won't be touched.
They'll do a breakthrough.
Yeah, just inside court, you're going to put a protective wall up as they're working on the courtyard.
Got it. Perfect.
And then next summer, they'll do the breakthrough. I mean, it might be a little bit tight in the beginning in certain, during certain times, because the six raiders will not be allowed to go uptown until after the first quarter this year. So there might be some times on rainy days, but nothing inside's going to touch it. And they're going to be starting some work on the third floor, but just getting access, you know how we're expanding over the roof in that area, just expanding where the doors are going in, not the classrooms themselves. So that work's going to be going on. So we've been meeting with contractors and Saban and Land. We'll have every other week meetings with them, get two-week look at schedules, so we'll have a good idea what's going on with that.
Any surprises over the summer with, you know, what's at stage or what should have that done? Pretty much?
Not, not really. We were hoping that the storm drain would be further along by now, to be honest with you, but there's a lead time.
Wasn't the pipe lead time?
Yeah, pipe lead time delayed it, so other than that, no real surprises yet that we're aware of.
Yeah, the library is moving, it's probably a week behind where we thought it would be, but at the same time, there's some long lead time custom items that they're waiting on.
Yeah, the casework is, you know, they didn't get that done. We thought it might be customized casework.
That was disappointing, that's.
Yeah.
That was really, oh man.
Yeah, that's going to delay it about a week.
Well, the fields look great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the pumps look great.
Yes, nice pumps. Very pretty pumps.
Just need to make sure we can get the water from Meadow over to those pumps.
We're working on it.
And we had two incidents over the summer that gave some pumps.
Yeah, four of them.
The extra ones.
Yeah.
And we're entering active hurricane season.
Yes, we are.
Could get really entertaining.
But it's like having a new car, so we should make sure the security on the field is, you know, up and running. And I hear people complaining about people riding their bikes over the track.
Yeah. I do look that excited.
I mean, we should just be vigilant about who gets to be on there and property or something.
And this, when Jen and I met with the architects and so on, the sandbags are still going to be out there until that all gets squared away.
Yep.
So hurricane comes along and it isn't, there isn't a pipe yet, there won't be the sandbags.
There'll be a lot of mud.
A lot of mud, yeah. But that's enough.
Yeah.
Great.
Any questions on any of those things? We'll keep you posted on these.
You're going to talk about bonds and prices?
Yeah. Except, except under my topic, you have the approval of the professional.
I'm just going to be a John.
Yeah, so we're required annually to have an approved professional development plan, and so we've submitted to you for board approval.
Has this changed much in terms of prior versions?
It's not really, no, it's not changed all that much. It just, it's updated to reflect current initiatives and potential of, you know, if we bring a different consultant in and things like that. But the layout's the same, the focus is fairly similar to what it's been, but just reflective perhaps of some different workshops this year that we may not have over in the past.
Okay, great. Can I get a motion to approve the professional learning plan for 2019? Second. Any discussion or questions about this? Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Are you against?
Thank you. So this evening before you, you have a number of resolutions for new hires. And these new hires are a result of resignations and retirements. You'll see certified staff, you'll see a number of leave replacements, some of them starting right in the school year, others starting a little later. Inevitably, we have teacher aid resignations at this time of year and appointments of new teacher aides. This is historically the meeting where all of our hourly teacher aides, hourly lunch monitors, substitutes are all annual appointments. So this is the meeting where we ask you to approve them for the year. Under other personnel items, you'll see a side letter, which we have discussed between the BTA under Jim McMillow's leadership and the district specifically because of the new middle school schedule. And wanting to make sure that the contract language is clear about how one defines a teacher's schedule in this new paradigm. So we were able to work and come to consensus and have the side letter before you this evening. In addition to Dr. Levitz, our medical director's contract, and a couple of other resignations that we are looking to fill now. And then we have two new coaches being put before you this evening in terms of JV Modified Girls Soccer as well as assistant coach of varsity football. So with that, you have a revised all coaches roster. So I am asking you to consider resolutions A through double F, please.
Can we do them all together? Okay, can I get a motion to approve? Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
No.
I think certainly for my sake, it's sat, see, this is making long. I guess that was over the summer, so I didn't have a chance to make a question, but I'm sure.
I'll pass that along.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you against? Thank you.
I'll start with prior year budget update. I don't have a current year budget update yet. Prior year, basically, anything that could happen towards the end of the year was all good news.
That was like.
This stuff, yeah.
And it came from state aid, as we locked in our state aid number before the new numbers came out last year. Came from employee benefits between teachers, retirement system, and FICA. You know, we assumed we were going to spend what we budgeted and we spent less. And contractual. Again, we assumed we were pretty much going to spend what we budgeted and we spent less. And we closed all of the open purchase orders. So it was all good news. So we are able to cover the $500,000 in fund balance for the next year. And then we're also, we were also able to contribute $500,000 in the transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund, as well as, you know, maximizing our insurance reserve and keeping roughly 4% in, under, on the covered fund balance.
So in the lower right hand, I apologize, you guys don't have this, but it's available. But on the lower right-hand side, we have $1.3 million capital projects as of 6/18 going to 8/31. That actually went down to almost nothing, and then you went back up.
Back up.
Because that was the payment for the, for the field.
Exactly.
If you don't see that movement, but the prior version of this would have had a much lower number.
Exactly.
And so then, that's like a one-way thing, right? We have to get a referendum.
Yep. We have some ideas.
So that, that money that goes in there, that can't be used if there's an origin of bond for the project? This has to be separate?
No. It can be used if the, if the board puts forth a referendum that's voted by the people to increase the, the size of that bond.
Well, it doesn't have to be a referendum, it can be part of next year's budget, a release of the Capital Reserve.
No.
That'd be a separate.
It'd be a separate referendum.
So there's, no, there wasn't a place to put that money that's a little bit more punchable?
See, we could, we could have gone probably to the TRS reserve. But, you know, we're, things are looking also a lot better this year as well, so I think we'll have the opportunity to do some things.
And we did, we did establish a TRS.
We did, we established it.
Capital projects, they got to be separate and specific.
Yeah.
But what did, do we fund the TRS reserve?
Not yet. We were talking about possibly funding it from the tax surcharge reserve, which we haven't tapped in a decade.
That starts the way of tax.
And possibly, if there was any surplus at the end of this year.
Eleven months.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we finished the year in, in better shape than I forecast, which is always a better situation than finishing out.
Was it sales tax income or something? Is that, that's the state aid you were talking about?
No, no. The state aid comes from Albany. Sales tax is a thing that's going to look good for us this year.
Oh, we haven't gotten any.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I pointed out this current year.
Well, go out and buy a lot of stuff.
And so that's, you know, we're starting the year knowing that we're looking very good in revenue because of the new sales tax piece, which was not budgeted for for the current year.
That was like $170,000.
Yeah.
That's just through the year.
These costs were in the 1920 or 1819 budget?
Uh.
I think we made enough payment in 1819, and most of it's funded this year.
Okay. The next topic is financial action items.
We've got a lot of financial action items that are basically just road items that we do each year. We're awarding our bus bid to the same people, basically, who had it last year.
This is the, this is the athletic and.
This is athletic and field trips.
So.
Don't ask her. Don't, don't look at her.
She was trying to hide.
Please hide.
Like, towards the end of the spring, like buses, like kids were like hanging out at, at Fields, no bus, like what was happening? This morning?
This morning, yeah, that was this morning, too. We're, we're seeing the same problems as we had last year.
With this company?
We only had two bidders. It was this company and a company we worked, that, that other districts are experiencing the same issues with. So this is kind of a.
What did they say?
We're going to work, we're going, we're going to work harder with them. Part of the issues we had with them last year was, was that we needed more buses than they forecast for us because the field wasn't available in the spring. But that doesn't excuse them for what they did this morning. I mean, that's, you know, there's, the school isn't even in session, and they, they, they're having trouble getting us buses. So we're working on it.
What's, just curious, out of curiosity, what's plan B when the bus doesn't show for whatever happened this morning?
We, we had, we were supposed to go off-site for practice, so we practiced. It's a more problematic than it happens for a game.
Does it make sense to like invest in an asset just as a reserve asset? Probably not, but have you ever thought about that?
The problem is the driver, you know? That's, that's, that's part of the problem with this bus company. They're having a problem, problem getting, getting drivers.
Is there, in a contract with them, is there any negative?
Yeah, we get, you know, we get to, you know, basically knock off, you know, when, when they miss a run, we get to credit their invoice, but we don't, we don't want to credit their invoice, we want a bus.
Not paying them for services they didn't buy.
Yeah, we don't pay them, in fact, to get money when they fail to drive a bus.
Did you get money when they failed to drive?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, we, it goes press against their invoice, but we don't want the money, we want a bus.
This is also different than, do you have the, is the busing for the private school continuing?
No, that's separate. That's through BOSI's, a consortium with Eastchester, Palmeton, Tuckham.
That's larger now.
Yeah.
Do you know what, two years ago, it was like $700,000.
Yeah, it's going to be less than 700, but we'll be close to probably about 680 or so. We got probably 15 to 20 more kids than we had last year.
And then the bid came in a little under $200,000, if you're asking for 240, that just for.
That's, the only way to measure a bus bid is to just say the cost of each, you know, each location that's in the bid, what they bid on, and just add it all up. Because we don't know where we're going to play all our games or anything like that.
Is it, is it 40,000 or 45,000 pushing? That's a cushion?
No, that's what we expect to spend.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I assume that's going to be down, last year was 237, wouldn't be down because we have both fields this year?
It would be down, but the cost of this bid is up.
Okay.
The next one is, after we had the reorganizational meeting, I was informed by the people we wanted, that I preferred as our financial advisor, that they were having litigation issues with the people they broke off from, so they wouldn't be able to satisfy our needs. So we're just going back to our original financial advisor, who's marketing our, our prospectus, or creating it and then marketing it, and selling the bonds for us, which is no big deal. But I want to get it on record that we're sticking with the old people and the same rate that, that their prior RFP was at.
How do you feel about the people after capital market?
I would prefer the same, you know, Beth Ferguson, who we, we worked with in developing the financials for the project itself, that I would prefer to have kept working with her, but that was impossible.
So what are the losses between the people that left and?
Sometime, non-compete litigation or something going on. So they're, right now, they're, we're in the legal and, and writing the prospectus stage. And then when we get to September, it'll be the bond marketing stage with hopefully a sale in late September. And right now, it could get much better as a rate requirement, you know, get inverted yield curve, so.
So what do you, do you have a guess as to where?
We're, I'm hoping for around 2%, maybe even a little lower, but we'll see.
And we planned for four.
Yeah.
That was high.
Yeah.
Concerned with.
Yes, I know. We also, we're facing the rising.
I was going to say.
They love, they love to tell you high. Yeah.
Because nobody wants to be on the wrong side of that.
No. And they're never, they never are. They pick a figure that is so ludicrous that they never miss.
And what is the recommendation now on Trish? They come back with one, and is that more a couple weeks?
Well, that's, we're still looking at 15 years.
Because at one point, were we going to do some 10 years and then 15?
It's probably, I think it would be cheaper to sell it all as one, one big issue.
Sure.
So we're looking at that. And then, you know, by the time, you know, in five years, we're going to have the auditorium debt all the books, because that was only 10 years. So we'll, we still maintain financial flexibility for the future. You know, and, and it's, you know, something the board might want to look at. We're going to still have a lot. We're going to still have a lot, I've got wood, more, more debt capacity to do some of the things under the same financial parameters that didn't make it in the bid award.
This is what we discussed in June.
Yeah. And, you know, that's something the finance committee will be looking at.
That should be a, that should be a, this 2019 discussion.
Because, you know, the referendum timing would be with the budget, you know, the referendum.
Or December.
Yeah.
I mean, it's...
Yeah, it's true too, I guess.
Boy, I think what you want to do is price the bonds and then...
Right now, that's...
Yeah.
It's not going ahead of ourselves, exactly. So I guess I'll take A and B and then the contractual services we'll do together so it can...
So can we get a motion to approve the financial action items, A and B?
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
C, D, E, F, and G is the exact, I ran that one in today because we have a meet for another month and we already have athletic trainers here. We finally got the contract for New York Orthopedics, same level as last year, so I, I wanted to add that to this agenda, but C, D, F, C, D, and F are all the same vendors doing the same services at the same price that we've had in prior years. And E is, we added another vendor, and this is just for substitute nurses and for nurses who accompany needing students on field trips, which is not a very large cost, but we're adding another vendor. So it's all, they're all basic, mostly special ed and evaluation services that we do each year.
And G is the same as last year's, well?
Yeah.
So the only new one is...
G is exactly the same. The only new one is we're adding U.S. medical staffing to go along with girl care surgeons. That's it.
So you just have two vendors you can go to?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
And they don't drive buses? Okay, can we get a motion to approve C, D, E, F, and G? So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it?
That's it. Facilities, Roy did an excellent job of going through. We have two change orders and I anticipate maybe one more, if not two, for the library, but in addition, these change orders total about $6,400. We have a $20,000 allowance on the project, so these are below the allowance and they're reasonable change orders for discovered conditions, I believe. Removing a closet and patching semicircle artwork that was removed well within the allowance. The allowance was, was put in place for these kind of things. And Lam and Savin are doing a very good job pounding down these change orders.
And are we, at this point, in the library project, do there need to be, where it's a can lane, so it doesn't need anymore?
There, there's going to be one or two more, but they'll be below the $20,000 allowance. It's not going to go over 780. In fact, it will probably be a little under.
And the first one was a scope change of by us, correct?
Yeah.
So they both have to be through us.
Mm-hmm.
When a change order happens, both Savin and, and who else looks at it?
The architect and the construction manager.
And then who, who looks at it? I mean, these are small items. Hopefully, they are all small going forward, but, you know, I looked at one point, there was 32 hours for, I think it was Masonary for one of these change orders. I mean, I have no idea if 32 hours or two hours.
Yep.
They look at that.
They look at that. They calculate that. Then they bring them to us, you know.
So they say this was reasonable for the work.
And they'll tell us this is where they started, this is what we give it down to, this is what we think is reasonable.
So they've already done the negotiations?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the resolution regarding the change orders?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then we have our notice of annual fire safety inspection. We have to record that it's been, what do we, is there a resolution here?
No, there's no resolution. It's just a notice to the public that the fire inspection was conducted and we received our certificate of occupancy for both committees, field maintenance building and main building.
Yep. And then D, there is a resolution.
Fire safety plan?
The fire safety policy with appended exiting procedures after an annual, existing procedures.
This is the same?
Yeah.
That was all?
Same fire safety.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the 2019 fire safety plan?
Move.
Second. I just have a question on, I guess there were follow-up items, things for them to curtail the action. I assume somebody is likely...
Oh, yeah, Mike Lee's all of that.
So I have just another quick question. As we do construction, does this have to be modified?
Yes. If, if we change egress, we're trying to limit change, like, for instance, when we close the atrium.
Yeah.
We're still expecting to keep egress in that area, whether it be through the blue gym or something like that, or a narrow egress path out there, if we can, if changed it.
Oh, okay, got it.
Even as of yesterday or something.
Obviously, it didn't go down fair enough. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I think that's it for me.
So this is historically the meeting where I ask the board to approve all of our committee on special education and our 504 team recommendations for the 1920 school year. It also includes our committee on preschool special education. As you were aware, we have a number of mandates to follow both federal and state laws and regulations as it pertains to ensuring that all students have a free and appropriate public education. So you are receipt of a memo. I appreciate the questions that I've received. So before you, without names, of course, is all of our students who have been identified as having disabilities and require special education and related services for the 1920 school year.
So... How many, how many follow-up items are there? Because it looks like in the memo, there's not a lot.
Yeah, so...
Nine in high school.
No, if you look at, do you have the chart? A 504 chart? So if you look at that, you have a total number of 504 plans within each of the buildings. 26 504 plans in our elementary school, 37 in our middle school, 101 in our high school.
Oh, why does the memo say, why does the memo say high school, 10 referrals, non-students qualify?
That gives you the new referrals. I wanted to give you, to give you a sense of how many referrals we had throughout the school year, how many were found eligible, ineligible, so that that's what the summary is in the cover memo.
I'm sorry, where on this page is it?
I think it's the next one. That's CSE, the 504 is the next one. There you go.
So that's like almost a quarter of the...
15.
That's right. So overall, district-wide, 10% is typical for 504, but our elementary and middle school, elementary helps that number because we're so low in the elementary school. Our high school numbers are high. And we are looking at that and ensuring that our criteria is rigorous and that it's a fair and ethical system.
You gave some historic data on these.
Yeah.
This and, you know, it kind of jumps around a little bit. And when you talk to other schools, is this similar to other schools?
Yeah. Our, our CSE, our committee on special education, numbers are lower, but our 504 numbers at our high school are higher.
Okay.
We also work very hard to, we're pretty unique in that we only have three students that we can't meet their needs here in the district and we send them to other placements. All three of them happen to be residential students where they require 24-hour care. And that's highly unique. Other school districts have a number of students that need to be educated in other districts. Some of them come to us, to our special classes. So, and I give our administrators and teachers a lot of credit for that because they're willing to accommodate a range of abilities within their classrooms so kids can stay in district.
So is, are you saying that of the 100 or so students in high school or 504, plan participants, some number of those aren't Bronx residents?
Um, no, the 504 students are ours. The CSEs are ours, right? Yeah. When you look at the, the CSE numbers, you'll see on that chart, the second to last row is special class. You see that? And so that gives you a breakdown of how many students are in our special classes and how many of them are tuition students. Meaning, other committee on special educations from neighboring districts recommend our district for their students.
Well, I think we talked about this a little before, but I think the issues of equity and, and how students interact with each other matter here, so to the extent we can take a hard look at this, that would be appreciated.
So, do you have any idea when you'll be, have your thoughts put together on the farm forage? So that's a, a discussion, it was actually part of the interview process when we were interviewing new psychologists. So that is a priority agenda item for us to be discussing this fall. So I'm hoping in a couple of months, we'll have some good ideas in terms of how to attempt to address this.
But it's a complicated issue, right? I mean, there's a policy and the policy is all well and good until you start talking to parents about how that policy may impact them and/or their kid, right?
That's correct.
Those must be fun conversations we're having. When do you think those conversations might take place? Because I'd kind of like to watch.
It's...
Yeah. So do you want to approve your recommendations for this year?
Yes, please.
Okay. So can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion, any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Thank you.
Okay, so next topic is committee reports. I mean, we have a number of them as we start the fall, so we'll report those next time. Action calendar, September 19th.
September 19th, next meeting.
So that, will that be prior to a, a decision putting on the bond, pricing on the bond strategy, pricing?
Yeah.
So we, my question is, will we have time to talk about the profile of the amortization and structure before we do it every week for the next meeting?
No, because we're going to need, if we're going to have an influence, we need to make a decision so they can shop.
They thought about doing it by September 30th, so the answer is no.
Yeah.
So I think our finance committee would be...
Before the old chair.
Before the September meeting.
Oh, you, we talked about amortization or...
Just the whole thing. We want to have, you know, we want to have input on like how...
Yeah, we'll meet, as they're putting the documents together before they're going on to market, I guess if it's going to be different in the 15 years, we'll definitely inform the board that this is a change that we anticipate.
Yeah, I think that's the question. What board actions do you need before September 19?
Nothing.
You don't need any board action.
I don't need anything, just...
A lot of that...
The issues before September 30th, they take them to market on, or about September 30th, right? And it's a change in what we've approved.
If they change the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, but only if they change the year.
The board never approved...
No, amortization's not...
We approved it. A conversation about it or...
Whether it's court, you know, we'll get an ask, much better estimate, we'll think the interest is going to be, you'll see what the amortization and interest costs are and we'll compare that to what we told the committee. And you'll see that they're favorable numbers, but until we have better, we nail it up, we think they're in shape, we should really do it, still are very close to it.
Yes, good.
Well, the range we gave before was more for the referendum, we said we don't want to go over.
Yeah, but for a decision like that...
Yeah.
Okay, anything else or data?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. A motion to adjourn the meeting? Anybody else up there have anything to say?
Oh, sorry.
Karen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm, I'm working on buses.
Got your CDL?
I do, I need us.
There you go.
I'm in the gym so we can drive them.
I'm Squid, I introduce myself. I'm Greg Gilliam, if you don't know me, I'm the president of the NPC this year, so I be working with a lot of users. Hi.
Welcome. Welcome. A terrific, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.